We like to begin with giving each candidate an opportunity to tell us how they feel their presence would have made a difference if you had been serving on the city council the last two or four years.
Okay, great. Good morning. I'm privileged to be here. I feel honored to be here. The sun is bright. Life is good in Palo Alto. I parked my car here and went back home on a bike and came back on a bike to get some stuff. So that is the kind of Palo Alto that I am thrilled about. I have known Palo Alto since 1973. I first came in December 1973 from Texas Tech. I was a graduate student at Texas Tech, starting in fall, and I went to visit my brother who was in a PhD program, Colorado State in Fort Collins. We drove with my sister-in-law and him in a Volkswagen Bug to visit my sister-in-law's cousin, uncle, who was working at one of the companies here in semiconductor industry. So we drove all the way to Cheyenne, Wyoming. We came through Utah, Salt Lake City, and Nevada. We won $100 on a five-cent jack-- what do you call it? The slot machines. And I came here. I came to Stanford. I believe that Christmas, maybe three days later, when we were visiting my cousin, San Jose, on Terry Way. And I just felt like it's a wonderful place to be. And, you know, I had thoughts earlier in India that I wanted to apply to Stanford and all that, but I didn't have the guts to think that I was as good as them, nor I didn't have the money. My parents, my dad just deceased about a year ago. Oh, no, about two years ago then, in 1970, suddenly with tetanus. And we were pretty wealthy in the sense that we were-- my father was a farmer, about 100 acres, and we had a house full of people helping. And a very good heritage for two, three generations of living well as a farmer and a social worker. But so anyway, I took a calculated risk. I was admitted to 16 schools, and I picked Texas Tech because it had the lowest tuition. And I wanted to make sure that I come to America before I, you know, I do too much going to Berkeley or Stanford. So that went out fine. I graduated and I came here. So I've been looking to come here for many years. My daughter Vanessa refused to apply to Stanford. She thought I couldn't afford it, and she went to Berkeley. She was an outstanding high school student. And we have a little competition at home, and I want to prove to her that I can go wherever I want and be better than her. So she's now in Switzerland, working for Genentech and their corporate office in Roche. So she comes to visit me only on game days, you know, where Cal and Stanford fight. And she refused to go to the campus, and she's that devoted to Berkeley. But I hate Berkeley because it's not as clean. I think Berkeley could do a lot better, but that's besides the point. I love Stanford. I was lucky enough to retire from Boeing in 2010 and coasted in Newport Coast for a year, just sitting on the hill when the economy was going down and thought through a whole lot, where do I want to go? So I picked two or three places in the world that I want to retire because I'm single and my children are grown. I picked a couple of places. I thought London was good, New Delhi would be good, and Paris. And Palo Alto, I wanted to be near university town. I ruled out Boston for its weather. New York, I don't like New York that much. So I came here, and it so happened that on January 17, 2012, I got a call from VMware and said they want to find somebody that has mergers and acquisitions experience, integration experience in the IT technology war. And I interviewed that evening, and they offered me a job. And I started working here in January 2012. And we are a very well-connected family in this area. My cousin came to Berkeley in 1959 on a ship. And I have-- my sister leaves, my mom was living with her in Fresno, and my brother-in-law's a doctor, oncologist.
So let me interrupt you because I want to get sort of back to this campaign. So how would it have made a difference if you had been on the city council?
Okay, I'm giving my background. You're right. I need to focus on it. So I think number one is there are a lot of eyes. Eye for integrity. You know, I have the integrity to be a council member or a mayor or whatever and do the right things, you know, not do shady things, things that come to a marginally right or wrong, looks like appearance of collusion, those kind of things. You know, I'm using strong words, but I think people do need to realize that. You know, the city has not been open with certain things, like that building, 27 University, going to John R. Aega and having-- trying to swap, give $200,000 for a big parcel of land. Those kind of things, I think I would have certainly objected to it or talked to people in an open forum. That's the difference. So integrity, you know, right? The second thing is innovation. So we have to innovate. I mean, why would we not want to innovate? Because, you know, we have tremendous resources here. You've got Elon Musk, you've got Tim Cook, which I see him every day in town. We've got 60, 70 corporations that are working hard, you know, 60-hour days to try to do something so they can get ahead. But what I'm saying is we need innovation. You know, the old thinking of, oh, I'm a residentialist, I'm this, I'm that, you know, I want to protect. That is not the new paradigm. The new paradigm is to figure out a way to do new things. Now, they're talking about building 200 square foot homes. And that isn't Palo Alto. You know, you can't live in a 200-square-foot home. You know, you can't live in a train station, train compartment. That is very-- you know, it's really going back to 200 years. You know, we want to live in a free society where there's free air, where this-- so we need to think innovatively. I'm not the only innovator. I want to encourage innovation so people can do right things and promote that. You know, this is an old paradigm. You know, Peter Drucker was my teacher, and I studied under him. He has a lot of influence on me. So the old theory of, you know, going to work, you know, going 40 miles here, 40 miles there, 100 miles-- that is-- that wasn't the case in 1900. So we've got to go back and see. So people work from their home. People work near their home, not travel-- you know, this gasoline engine concept of where-- so that allowed people to see world, but that also destroyed cities, you know. It destroyed health. So, you know, I was working in LA, in Orange County. I lived in Orange County, Newport Beach, Irvine area. Had to go to El Segundo, 41 miles, for 10, 15 years, you know. It takes a toll on you. That's not healthy. So we've got to do a new paradigm on how we work. Now we earn wages, now we raise our families, you know. This thing about, you know-- I'll give you an example, innovation, right? You know, this whole thing about going to school at 7:30 in the morning for high school kids. You've got to think through, you know. There are studies now showing that early morning is not the best thing. You know, the kids 16 to 17, 18-year-olds need a little bit more sleep. So why wouldn't we start at 10? Now, believe it or not, you go survey internationally, there are places that start at 10. So we've got to be innovative, you know. We don't really need to all work at the same time. We, you know, we could consider maybe staggering the working hours so we can all, you know, enjoy-- you know, you notice that at 4 o'clock in the morning, there's nobody on the freeway, right? So, I mean, those are the kind of innovative things we need to do. We need to give bicycle more power, you know, more electricity so you can run a little faster. So I'm saying that this town is for innovation. That's how Packard was here, David Packard was here, Steve Jobs was here. There's many more that are coming out. Elizabeth, you know, who started the turnos. VMware, you know, that's-- one of the greatest innovations is to cheat the computers so you can run both operating system. That's what we do. We don't need the residentialist and this and that, protect us, protect somebody else. No, that is not what I'm for. So those are the things that I would have done. Ask questions, probe questions. And, you know, just because somebody doesn't have a house, they're not any less important. Just because somebody has bigger house, they're not any more important. We're all the same. We're born with the same-- just about the same formation of two hands, you know, breathing apparatus and legs. So we need to think that nobody is above or below. So we need to help each other. So that's what I'm for. That's what I would have made a difference, you know. Maybe I'm talking too loud, but--
Okay. On one of the issues that the city's been looking at for the past several years, people living in their cars. I'd like to ask very specifically, what do you think the solution is to that?
I would not like people to live in cars. Absolutely. I just saw this lady that I see here at Starbucks. That is the kind of-- that's kind of very sad to see that. We have many, many empty buildings in this town. You know, all it needs is somebody that have a heart and open the door for them to not live in. You know, there's a lot of commercial buildings. You know, that's-- somebody can, you know, be nice and let them sleep at night, you know, and take a shower, you know. I mean, we have a lot of places where you can take a shower, you know. But for them to have to leave on the street, pathetic. It's just a lack of understanding of humans between each other. So it's their fault, yes. They need mental help, yes. They need, you know, they need some money, yes. But for them to have to live in a car is just not acceptable. And we shouldn't allow that.
So you would advocate for having either commercial property--
No, anyone, you know. Everybody has-- you know, there's houses that are $15 million. You know, I have a house. I live in a rental, but I have two bedrooms. I mean, I could say all that I, you know, I said and have that person come live with me. But there are things like that, you know. But for them to leave and allow it to leave is just a lack of-- lack of compassion is what I call it.
Okay. And staying on the housing topic, a lot of people feel like Palo Alto is built out, like we can't take any more growth. And I'm wondering what your--
No, that is true.
What your thoughts are on--
No, Palo Alto is because-- it is what it is because it's what it is. It has beautiful trees, laid out properly. So I would not go for dense buildings. I would go for people coming into these houses that are already big, you know. There is a six-bedroom house here. Why wouldn't we want to allow, you know, one or two guest students to come and live there? Opening your heart, that's what I'm saying. Change the zoning laws. You know, this is a single-family home, one person. It's all an old paradigm. You know, I've talked to a gentleman by name Don, who was-- I met with him, you know, on the Stanford dish. And, you know, I was walking with him because he was recuperating for something, I believe. And then we walked and we talked a lot. He said, you know, I host four or five students-- four or five people, not necessarily students-- in the house with modest salaries. Some give more money than the others, but I'm letting them in. You know, that's how we need to be, you know. We're so good at this. I'm not saying we want to invite the whole world here, but I think we can manage that, you know. It's just thinking, right? My dad used to have at least five, six people eat with him every day. You know, as a farmer, he wasn't-- my mom would always complain that this man brings too many people to the house to eat. We need to have a little compassion until the economy gets better. You know, it's 6% unemployment, right? If it's 5%, then, you know, they'll go and do things. So-- but to go and build things because we need affordable housing? No, I don't believe so. Because all it does is you've got a million-dollar property here, $2 million property, and you go and buy, you know, build affordable housing. You know what builders are going to do is low-quality building, right? Then that brings in some people that work here. And, you know, there's a huge-- you know, the schools need to adjust to whatever the families they have and all that. So I wouldn't-- I wouldn't lower the quality of people that are already wealthy, you know. It's-- that's just not necessary. You know, there are other solutions to allow them to mingle with the society, you know.
It doesn't sound as though the solutions in your mind include actions by local government. So if you could speak to the question of--
Yeah.
What specific things do you-- would you advocate for as a member of the Palo Alto City Council as opposed to just letting the market--
No, okay. So I was talking to my daughter yesterday. Actually, she corrected me that the federal government is not responsible for people housing and this and that at a local level. So local government needs to suggest ways to bring the poverty down and bring people to be able to live. So I sort of agreed with her. And this is what my position is. We need to do everything we can to accommodate them, you know. I also changed my position. I was Friday, Thursday, I was saying that it's un-American to-- for a government to tell you what the minimum wage is. You know, I conceded. I said, yeah, let's look at what Palo Alto needs for a person to live. One person that want to live here is $1,700, $1,800 a month rent, you know, times that, that, that. And it comes out to about $37 an hour to live just a regular life. So if he or she adds another person to it, you know, that could be $20 an hour, 40-hour week, right? So what I would like to do is increase the-- you know, I would like the businesses, without government telling you, to increase the minimum wage so that they can come here, live comfortably, and not work comfortably, and then take the money home and find a place near here, somebody that's nice, that can allow them to live in comfort-- you know. And there are many, many owners that don't need the money. And I see in college terrorists. I talk to the people there. You know, there's few houses there where they're not-- they're not paying $2,000 or $2,500 like I am. So, you know, it's a give and take. So those are the kind of measures I would do. And I would support them to have a little higher-- you know, I'll campaign for the businesses. I beg them to give them a little bit more money so they can live comfortably. I also would-- you know, I would also encourage to have a pass for parking. So what I'm understanding is that all these people that work here, every two hours they have to go and make sure that the car is not getting ticketed. You know, that is ridiculous for a-- you know, for an employee putting seven, eight hours there and have to go and change the parking, you know, or move the part-- you know, that is-- I don't like that, you know. I mean, I can say stronger words, but, you know, we should give a pass to them so that they don't get ticketed, you know. And we, you know, Palo Alto doesn't need these revenues, you know, these, you know, what I call nickel-and-diming things. We need to be taller than others because we are rich, you know. We have a good tax base, you know. So I think we need to be generous to these employees, and, you know, then they will come to us. We want them to continue to like Palo Alto like everybody liked Palo Alto for the last 100 years. We need to make a difference, you know. That's why I'm running, you know.
So giving all employees a pass that allows them to park in two-hour parking zones.
Right.
So how would you address the problem of there then not being any parking for anybody else? Are you supporting the residential parking permit process?
Yeah, absolutely. I have a residential parking permit in college terrorists. It's wonderful, you know. It's wonderful. I have--
So you'd like to see that replicated?
Yeah, and test it out, you know. Some areas it may not work, but some areas it-- you know, this whole notion of downtown is for, you know, tax base. I don't need a tax base, you know. I want to live peacefully here. You know, I've had enough tax base. So I think we need to kind of slow down on downtown commercialization. We need to uplift in areas like our kids can learn things. Like Malibu Park, I noticed there's a lot of art programs, science programs for-- it's paid, you know. Our kids want to be better than others, right? So we want like Los Altos-type people. But having a restaurant, you know, 10 restaurants of Chinese food or 10 restaurants of Indian food, we've had enough of that. We don't need the tax base. We're rich. I mean, nobody needs to tell them that, you know, the incomes are good. So we want to improve the quality of life. We want those kind of things to come into-- and, you know, it's wonderful. You go to downtown Palo Alto, about noon, 1 o'clock. The businesses are working, the younger technology workers are moving. And, you know, it's a very, very-- the Peter Drucker-like society where commercial capitalism is working. You're thinking about innovation. You're not thinking about this and that. You know, what I mean is there's a mix of businesses. Same thing is here. You know, you stand right in front of Wells Fargo. You know, there are a lot of technology companies that are working real hard in a conference room coming up with the concept of what they might, you know, change the world. And those are the kind of things I think Palo Alto stands for. That is the difference, you know.
So some people say the city council should do something about the types of retail that are in the California area and the downtown area. There's too many restaurants, you know, too many nail salons. And the city council should do something. And I'm wondering, what would you do to change the mix of the--
Nail, you know, nail services and restaurants, they're all small businesses, most of them. You know, this is not a Burger King and McDonald's here, right? So I would try to replace it with-- if a technology startup-- somebody wants to-- within a thousand square foot, they want to do a startup, just like, you know, a new technology venture. I would say be-- you know, you can't dictate owners to-- you know, you can only influence them. I would say bring in more innovation-type work. You know, nail and salons, you do need them, you know. I mean, you do need them. But you know what I noticed is that I have to go to Cupertino to get my jackets pressed for $250 for-- you know how much it costs here? It's $9.50 for my pants, you know. So why should me go there? Cost me like-- you know, sometimes I even forget. I just picked up my thing. Two months ago, I left them. So I think we have to have a balance of that. Why is it so expensive? Why do we have to pay $9.50 for-- same thing where I can go to Sunnyvale or somewhere for $2.50, right?
Because people will pay it here.
I don't know. You know, I don't really know. I'm not a owner. I think maybe the rent is high. So there's a lot of greed here, you know.
Maybe they're paying their employees $15 an hour.
Maybe. I don't have--
So what I don't understand in your response is what you would advocate as a member of the Palo Alto City Council in terms of adopting rules, regulations, procedures, processes--
I would only--
--that would bring any of these changes about.
What I do, I would encourage. I'm for governance, you know, just to give a broad outline. I'm for less government. I don't want any more rules, you know. I'm a free man, you know. I don't want anybody to tell me what to do.
But you describe the outcomes you want, so--
I want people to come out with outcomes on their own. Nobody wrote a directive for Palo Alto to be innovative, Palo Alto to be rich.
So you're running for the council to use it as a way of advocating for personal action by members of the community?
No, yeah, influence the community, you know.
But not to change any-- you wouldn't change any rules or ordinances?
I would. I would change things that are bad. I wouldn't encourage--
What are the--
Corruption, you know, backroom deals, talking to John R. Aega without telling people. I would stop that.
Okay, and what about the development issues that have dominated this campaign?
You know, we need to be like Town and Country, most of it. You know, I like Town and Country, you know, the size, the look, the Stanford compatibility. Don't fight with Stanford. Work with them, you know. Be smart enough to negotiate. Now, I took a class under Karas. You know, there's a gentleman, he teaches effective negotiating. So you need the skills. You know, I was engineered by education, but I worked for six companies. And I'm a program manager, project manager. You know what it is? It's a kick butt program manager. Things don't get done, you make it happen. You know, you don't wait for two years for a builder to default on you. You-- you know, it's what called it, you know, weekly status, monthly status. You know, you need to manage things. You know, Drucker says that. You need to manage people. Even knowledge workers, you need to manage them.
So let me get back to your comment that everything should be like Town and Country Village.
No.
So the zoning in Palo Alto-- the commercial zoning in Palo Alto allows for buildings to be up to 50 feet high.
I'm okay with that.
Well, then, how do you reconcile that with your statement that you wish--
It is because, you know, you can build a 50-foot building or you can build a Town and Country. And it's up to the architect, you know. You can have a house, two-story house, you can have a one-story house. So pick the one that's most appealing to you.
Well, I thought your point was that you wanted to--
No, I like it, but the zoning of 50 feet is okay. But I would prefer to see it, you know--
Okay, but I'm not talking about what your personal preference is. I'm talking about what you would do as a city council member.
No, I would approve it as long as it's 50 feet and it's appealing. Yeah, if it's-- if it has the right aesthetic, if it has a landscape, it's a walking-- no, someone just--
You wouldn't have a choice if it came in under the zoning. My question is, would you advocate any changes, as has been discussed during this campaign, in the current zoning to further limit the development of, say, commercial--
No, I am going to go for the 50-feet limit. I'm not going to go down. But my personal appeal is that I want the architects-- I want to challenge the architect to make it compatible with-- you know, you don't want to have an ugly thing when you have something else. You know, you've got to be, you know, what do you call it? Compatible with your neighborhoods.
What would be an example of a development that you didn't approve of that was adopted by the city council?
You know, I cannot say what that is at this moment. But, you know, the whole University Avenue, right in front of the-- the entrance to the-- entrance to go to the El Camino Real, is a huge hodgepart, you know. Same thing with El Camino-- the Embarcadero coming into El Camino Real. The whole interaction of people, students, businesses. You know, I think that needs to be redone. You know, there's a lot of unsafe things. Kids come out of the cars and run. You know, kids run because they're 16 and they are energy, right? My daughter used to do that at university high. And so we need to fix all that, you know. I don't-- if I would have done it, I would have done it more carefully with the overpass from people go from north to south. This is unsafe. You know, it's one person dying is one person we don't want, you know. We need to be-- we should have figured that out, you know, a few years ago. We have the money, right? Why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we be safe? I don't understand it, you know. Why would we allow all that confusion there near Embarcadero, you know? And right in front of a huge university, that's prestigious university, you don't want any deaths in the front of that. You know, I really resent that people haven't-- the government or the agencies, the safety agencies. You know, I understand El Camino Real is federal and this and that, that. You know, we just need to fix that. I'm going to first work on it first, you know. Traffic is my number-one priority, you know.
Okay. I want to ask you about an issue that was pretty big last year, which was Maybell, the Maybell development, the senior housing, and then the 12 single-family homes. Would-- did you favor that housing being built? Or were you against it because of traffic and other things? And impacts on the neighborhood?
You know, I-- nobody asked me, except you're asking me, right? And basically, you know, it's-- the development project has more density, right? That causes, you know, more traffic and things like that. So I am opposed to that. You know, if I were ever to ask me today, I would say, no. I would say they need to come up with a better plan.
Because of the-- because of traffic or because of the neighborhood pushback against it?
Both. You know, you have to be sensitive to the neighborhood, you know. You can't just go and ignore them and just build something people don't like, either a tall building or a small building, right? And also, traffic is a big concern. Until you address traffic concern, you don't want-- you don't want unhappy neighbors that have lived there for 20, 30-- not that I will take every input and say, yeah, you're right. But collectively, you know, it's--[1629.18] But collectively, you know, it's, I'm, I'm not going to decide for the people. People have to, you know, I'm representing people, so I'm going to listen to them, right? That's what democracy is, you know? I'm not, you know, to put a burden on a council member or 10, 12 people to decide everything for the city. It seems like, you know, that's what I'm noticing here, is that everybody, burden comes on the city. No, we, we should be able to just get the inputs and decide and be, and move on, you know? That's, it seemed like they're blaming this guy, they're blaming that lady and this. That's not what I'm used to, you know? Consensus building, move on. You know, that's what corporate world is, you know? We decide a lot of things. We don't agree on a lot of things, but once the decision is there, we all move along, you know? And that's the way it needs to be. I think there needs to be a little bit, a little bit of people like the work in corporate, the work in actually making things happen in manufacturing operations and things that need to be there. You know, we have a, I'm really disappointed there are lawyers here, but there are not a whole lot of plaintiff lawyers. They're all, you know, they're all working for the companies. Why is that? I don't know. But we have too many lawyers here, you know?
I want to ask you before we run out of time about your view on the various reform ideas for the planned community zone. What is your view of, of the PC zone and what needs to be done to improve it, if anything?
I think the, the planned community zoning needs to include, as I said, open up your homes. You know, we don't need more buildings, we need more people inviting into their homes. There are a lot of homes that they need, they could certainly build a little, another unit, two units, aesthetically right way and allow people to live and, and change all the rules, you know, that, you know, it's all hush-hush, you know, right? So, you know, you, you cannot have somebody else here, you cannot have somebody else there, all the excuses. We should come open and, and say, this is how we want to do it. And, you know, people are already doing it. You know, illegal, this illegal, that, just open it up. But we don't need to build too many more. I think we should try for four or five years to see how we can accommodate about 8,000 to 10,000 people into our community peacefully. And I, I don't want, I want the owners to kind of help the newcomers to, basically not to be too greedy, you know? I mean, you have the money and you'll get it when you, you know, leave, pass on to your family. But we want, you know, we, we don't want 2,900-dollar-one bedrooms here.
So the, the planned community zone doesn't generally deal with home development? It's a commercial development zone?
Also the, yeah, commercial development too. You know, we, we don't want any, we don't want any denser, uglier tall buildings.
I understand that. My, my question though specifically, with regards to the planned community zone, do you think any changes are needed in that process?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what are those?
You know, we want to make, number one, these modifications that the city people want. Number two, we want to be more responsive.
What modifications the city people want?
My gathering of, my collective, collective understanding of, people are really tired of a commercializing Palo Alto. So they want to slow down. They, they really are, they want the old Palo Alto, you know? Not that we will go back to 30s, they want it to slow down. We don't want too many more buildings, too many more industries. We have enough industry, we have enough.
So what, what would you change about the planned community zone then?
So we go and incorporate those ideas in the, you know, planned community zoning, you know? And, and let me continue, please, okay? The second thing is we want to discourage any taller buildings. We want to increase more things aesthetically to be able to allow more walking, you know, in the community, more, right? And then we want to be very careful, very careful to make sure that they're all energy-efficient. There's a lot more work you can do to upgrade what you already have. And, and give incentives to people that honor this. You know, to the, even to the extent that I would build, I would take the residential areas, some places, just like the University Avenue, you know, you go on the Litten side, there are some houses that are actually working as companies. I would allow more of that, you know? There's nothing wrong with that. So all those zoning changes, you know, I'm not going to write it. Somebody is going to write in and say, are you writing for this or not? So do not expect me to say line by line, this is what this needs to be. But I think PC zoning need to be changed, looked at it differently and, and, but not, you know, this city can only accommodate about 60,000, 70,000 people. Now, I would fight this other thing of the government wants you to put 9,000 people, you know? I'll go find a good lawyer like, you know, Ted Olson or somebody like that and fight all the way to Supreme Court. We don't need the money, you know? Federal government can, you know, we don't, we don't need that kind of money. I want Palo Alto to be like Palo Alto, you know? That's what it used to be. And I, I want to make it 10 times better. You know, I, I work with a lean engineer, he's a professor at Loyola. And I worked at Boeing, actually Hughes, his name is Charles Stoops. So when we do things, we, we call it 10x. You can improve just about anything 10 times better if you really think through, you know, many, many things, right? So I just remember, I don't believe in this 980 program the city, city has, you know? I think we need somebody there, 8 to 5, especially this is a small town with the innovative people working 60, 70 hours. So the city hall should change their way and, I mean, they can take 980, but they need to have somebody for us to go and pay tax, you know, pay bills and this and that. You know, this whole thing about I'm closing, that is, that is not working. That doesn't work. Other places, that shouldn't work here. I want them to open, you know? I want to be able to call somebody, you know, decent time, like, you know, but not close on Friday, every Friday. What the hell is that, you know? So, you know, I want to make some changes. I would, I mean, I don't know that I can influence them, but, you know, I'm like Greg Schmidt, you know? He's a gentleman, but I'm firm in my ideas and I want to work with people like him. You know, Greg Schmidt is a council member. I'm very honored to see him there. It seemed like a very thoughtful guy. So I want to kind of be like him, you know? Learn from him, you know?
Good. Well, we're out of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.